Well, good evening. Call the Cumberland County Commissioners Meeting of June 14th at 5:35. To order. Could I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Any errors or omissions? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approved. Those opposed, and I guess there are none. Informational reports or presentations? There's a minor amendment to CDBG?
Yes, in your packets this evening, there is a memo from Kristen Stiles, the CDBG director, who talks of a formula mishap at the Department of Housing and Urban Development that resulted in entitlement communities across America being adjusted a few hundred dollars each. And so, the memo is, as it states, and HUD is not requiring it, that this is for information only, there's no need for any formal commissioner action on this. But we wanted to at least be transparent enough and tell you that there was going to be a slight adjustment of the CDBG funds. Second item I have, and I just want to take a second and introduce our new team member here at the county, Kathryn Kahoon. Kathryn joins us as our administrative and special projects person. And her first day is here today, and we are thrilled to have her on our team and be able to share in the workload that we have piling up, especially around the stimulus funds that will be distributed over the next number of months. So, I just want to welcome Kathryn on board.
Thank you.
Other than that, Commissioner, that's all I have.
I was working off a wrong sheet here. Do we have to, can we assume that all the minutes, that all the minutes were approved when we approved the minutes? Because we've got regular minutes, the special meeting minutes, the regular meeting minutes.
I'll move to approve all of those.
I'll second.
No, we only have, I'm not sure which version of the agenda. That's the minutes that you're looking at.
That's minutes.
I'm sorry. No wonder I'm going to agree.
You should have approved all those minutes at the May meeting.
Yeah, okay. Right.
So do you have a current copy of the agenda?
Yep, I do.
Okay, good.
Do we have any comments from the public? Seeing no public here, I will close the comment period. We now have a consent agenda, and we have four items. Twenty-one oh thirty-six, approval of the MSAD sixty-one Law Enforcement Service Contract, thirty-seven, approval of purchase of heated banquet cabinet from JES Restaurant Equipment for the jail. Thirty-eight, approval of purchase of electric steamer from Pine Tree Food Equipment of Gray in the amount of nineteen thousand three hundred and seventy dollars. And thirty-nine, approval of Town of Long Island Summer Contract. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there any discussion?
I just have one comment. It's nice to see that the contracts are coming before us than later, because I know in the past, it's been after the fact, and I was really, I was glad were to see that with the law enforcement contract out and the one for Long Island. My only question is, the one on Long Island, how, they're only doing it now for two months? Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
They backed off, so for financial purposes, so it starts July first and ends on Labor Day.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Well, surely they're, little bit of a change as compared to past.
Well, good work on the contracts. I was impressed.
Yeah, I can't take credit for that, it's the staff, but I appreciate it.
Take the credit.
Any other discussion? Those in favor of approving the consent agenda?
Aye.
Unanimous. New business. Item twenty-one oh forty, approval of FY two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two Cross Insurance Arena Budget. Could I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Manager?
Thank you. The Cross Insurance Trustees, two weeks ago, met, went through the most up-to-date budget that General Manager Melanie Henkes put forth, and the trustees are sending a favorable recommendation to the county commissioners for adoption of this budget. As the commissioners are aware, this is a budget that runs July first to June thirtieth, and I'd like to ask Melanie to come up to the podium and walk the commissioners through the budget, as there is, it's a little different way of budgeting than how we typically do here in the county. So, Melanie, the stage is all yours.
Thanks, Jim. If you guys are looking in the packet and want to follow along as I'm talking, oh, I got it right up there. So, just to give you guys an understanding, so this page, we're not going to need to flip to any other portion of the budget, this is going to give you the thirty thousand foot view of the budget in its entirety. The first column is going to be what we're proposing for the upcoming year, the second column to the right, historically, is the previous year. So as we go down, we usually talk about the variances, is why numbers have fluctuated, whether it's increased or decreased, and normally use the previous year. So one of the things that we discussed, a lot of the buildings are using the two thousand nineteen season as a comparison, because that was the last fully completed year. For us, it didn't make a whole lot of sense to use that for a couple of reasons. Two thousand nineteen, for us, had some events that are no longer returning, if you guys remember Maine Mammoth's Arena Football, that was intact, and then some other businesses that, as I like to call them repeat offenders, there have been historical precedents as they've come over the years, are not returning for different reasons. They have, like any other business, they have felt the ripple effect of pandemic, so they are in the process of rebuilding their staff, putting together their products to put out on tour. And so, in addition, two thousand nineteen, there were going to be some extra layers for us to have to peel back as opposed to two thousand twenty budget. Although we didn't complete the full two thousand twenty year, there are three, about three and a half months left of that fiscal year, two thousand twenty was a really well-researched budget for us, we used a lot of historical data to pull those numbers for, and I felt like it was a really good baseline for us. So as we're going down, I'll toggle, when I toggle back and forth through the numbers, I will let you know if it's based on an actual or a budgeted number, and then that'll kind of help us piece everything together. But, couple of other factors to take, that we took into consideration when putting our budget together, was when would social distancing guidelines be lifted? We were planning this budget January and February, and so those things were still in play. When would the public be willing to participate in mass gatherings? And then discretionary income spending? When would families be willing to spend on the extras in life as opposed to paying the bills, knowing that also unemployment is going to come to an end in the near future? So, couple of those things, keep in mind as we go through the numbers, those were coming into, into mind when I was bringing these numbers together. But it leads me into the first line, at the top, number of events right there is seventy-eight. Seventy-eight for us, if you look over to the fourth column in comparison to a hundred and two, a hundred and two is what, is kind of our normal event load, will usually run between a hundred to a hundred and fifteen events in a non-pandemic year. And so I use that as a comparison to say, yes, we are behind as far as booking goes under a non-pandemic times. But one of the things that we, we took into consideration in putting this budget together was, what do we know at this snapshot, at this point in time, as far as June fourteenth goes? When we normally put a budget together, there are certain factors coming into play. If I, if I have a contract, that's definitely an event that's going to happen, you also base it off of conversations with promoters of, they're like, mm, I'm about ninety percent sure I'm going to bring you this show. And then you also know there are going to be a couple of events that you pick up along the way, so there's general forecasting in there, which is how you get to like the hundred number. So seventy-eight for us is what I know at this point in time, I know what's going to happen. And so, that is what made the most sense for us, so I can upfront say, do I think that this budget in its entirety is worst-case scenario? Yes. Do I think that we're going to get more events in the upcoming months? Yes. Do I know where we're going to end up? No. And so that's why this was the baseline, and we're laughing, because anything at this point is going to be icing on the cake, but like pandemic, my conversations with the promoters are still really fluid. If it's, if I would describe the industry for you at this point, it is a train trying to leave the train station, the engine's on, the cars are clanking behind us, and the wheels are slowly starting to push forwards, but they're, everybody's trying to catch up and kind of drink from the fire hose right now. And so my daily conversations are constant with promoters trying to move events around, choose dates, and kind of piece a tour together. And so that's why seventy-eight for us made sense right now, I think we're going to gain more, particularly in the upcoming months. If you move six more lines down, that'll get you to gross ticket revenue of three-point-one million, in comparison to the three-point-eight million of two thousand twenty. So one question that should come to your mind is, if I'm increasing my events, but my ticket revenue is decreasing, why is that? And so I'll go ahead and shoot myself in the foot and answer that for you. The reason for that is, is that normally, when your event load increases, your ticket revenue should also increase. One of the things that I did in this budget was I had some concerns with events that were scheduled to play off in the fall. Because it's the start of our event season, PBR happens right at the beginning of September, and I'm, that discretionary income, are the fans going to show up and spend their money at that point in time? Because unemployment is getting ready to click off around that time. So I reduced their ticket sales by about ten percent. Maine Mariners, same thing, the first half of their season, I reduced ticket sales by five and a half percent, not because I don't think people want to come, but again, concern about whether or not they're going to be able to spend that for their families. And then college hockey is another one, right now it is scheduled to play off in November, and I don't know who the opponent is going to be. I think you guys all know, ticket sales for a Boston College versus a Vermont or somebody else, the ticket sales are going to look a little bit different. And so, knowing that those potential speed bumps were coming our way, I budgeted conservatively as far as ticket sales go. And so that's why you're seeing a slight reduction on that line, and why I dropped ticket revenues slightly. If you move on down to net rent income, that line, as soon as you see net rent, you need to start thinking, okay, what's the deal structure, is what type of event mix do we have coming in? And for us, there's two different types of deals, they'll usually fall under two different umbrellas. You'll have a rental deal, which is exactly what it sounds like, promoters will pay a lump sum rent, plus miscellaneous expenses like ticket sellers, cleaning, operational changeover, that sort of thing. And then a co-pro deal. A co-pro is exactly what it sounds like, we are becoming a co-promoter with a promoter, which means we are sharing in the risk of the show. At the end of the show, we put all revenue and expenses back into the bucket, and we split it fifty-fifty. So in that scenario, I'm not going to charge a promoter rent, because it would be like charging myself rent. So, that one will usually, I kind of describe as high-risk, high-reward. If you're willing to share in the with, the risk, then that's a great deal for you. But the reason that I explain that is because the different type of deal structure is going to render a different amount right here. And so a lot of times, if you see the rental piece fluctuate, it is usually because I might be heavier on the co-pro deals, so I'm not going to have that lump sum number in the net rent income category. And so that's why I also said, two thousand nineteen was not a great comparison for us. I had a lot of co-pro deals that year, and this upcoming year, I'm going to have more rental deals, which is great for us, because there's not as much risk, you're still going to generate revenue, it's just a different approach on the deal structure. And so right now, in the net rent income, you're seeing about a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollar difference between where we ended in two thousand twenty, and if you go over to the fourth column, it's in comparison to four hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars. And you can see that although I have less events, I'm heavy on the rental deal structure, which is why I'm coming close to that number, and why there's only about an eight thousand dollar difference between the two, but that's how I'm getting to four hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars. And then that next line down, net service income, is around three hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. And one question that you should come up with is, if I have got more events, my expenses are naturally going to increase, and that's exactly what's happening right here. But if you compare it into, in comparison to column four, we're comparing two hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars with a hundred events, versus seventy-eight events at three hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. And so you would think, right, well, you've got less events, it should be less expensive, expensive to run your shows. And while, yes, logic would tell you that, we know our expenses, unfortunately, are getting more expensive. Cleaning for one, cleaning is definitely going to be higher for us, the purchasing of certain types of chemicals to make sure we're continuing to battle COVID, the air filters that we're putting in the building, they catch a higher particulate. And in addition, stagehands, those expenses are going up, and then as we know, minimum wage is going to increase January one, and that's about an eight-point-three percent increase for me. So that's why, when we're comparing to a higher event load, my expenses are still exceeding that, because it's, it's just kind of a new era as far as putting events on goes. And so that's why it is becoming more expensive for us to do events. So when you take the forty-nine minus the three hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars, that's how we arrive at our direct event income of a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. Moving down to suite revenue, suite revenue is the amount of suites that we project to sell, to sell at different events, that's going to include Mariners game, concerts, college hockey. We have six tower suites to sell. Of the six, right now, three of those are contracted in sponsorship deals, which means that I have another three to be able to go out and sell. And so I often tell people, think about it like selling a car, I can sell it as a car that's intact, or I can break it up in parts and sell it for parts. Both ways, I'm going to be able to generate revenue. But right here, we're looking at the parts, we're looking at the extra three suites that aren't contracted out, that I'm going to be able to generate revenue off of, and that's how I've gotten to eleven thousand dollars. Surcharge facility fee and ticket convenience fee, the next two lines down, those fees are attached directly to the number of tickets sold. So if you guys think about, if you've gone online and purchased tickets, there are convenience fees that are attached, you are paying for the convenience of being able to purchase online. And the reason that that exists is, all buildings are going to have a ticket deal with a ticketing company, whether it's Pacquiao and or Ticketmaster, and we have to pay them fees to be able to operate. So that's where those are coming from, and why you get hit with those sometimes painful fees when you're purchasing online. So that's where those numbers are coming from. So surcharge facility fee is a hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars, and then ticketing convenience fee is a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars, and that gets us to our total revenue of three hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. And I'll pause right there. Does anybody have any questions up until this point? I know I'm kind of shooting from the hip real quick, but if you have any questions, stop me. Everybody good? Okay. Moving down to ancillary income, ancillary income is going to be concession and novelty income for us. The way that we get these numbers is, I have a database that I put together, if you ask Jim Galey, he knows that I love a good Excel spreadsheet, and so I went in and pulled all of our events. So each seven, each of our seventy-eight events, I've got at least three to four years' worth of data to look at. In each event, I can go in and see, on average, how much did each consumer spend at every event? And so when we're looking at the historical, historical data, I can see the ebb and flow of what purchasers have normally done over the years. And then that brings a bigger conversation between myself and the F and B manager. Where have we been? So, Globetrotters, for instance, if somebody, if on average, they spent four dollars per person, can we increase that, and how are we going to do it? Can we get it to four twenty-five? Four twenty, you know, a quarter for several thousand people adds up. And so that's where that number is derived from, and why we're looking at three hundred and ninety thousand dollars. One thing that I did not do was mirror what I did with ticket sales. Ticket sales, if you recall, we just said that in the fall, I went in and tweaked it, because I was worried about consumer spending. I did not reduce concession income with the theory that if somebody's purchasing a ticket, they're not going to get in the building and then think, nope, I'm not going to buy the four-dollar beer, I need to save my money. Most of the time, if they need to save the money, they're not going to buy the ticket. There's going to be very few people that go to a hockey game and think, nope, not getting a beer, because I got to save. And so that's why I didn't reduce that the same way I did on the ticket sales, I kept those pretty similar. And this is where I'm talking, when I mentioned earlier, the historical data, this is really where we kind of dug in on what the consumers were doing and buying, and where do we think that we can go? And so that's why you're seeing something pretty similar to the sixty-seven events versus our seventy-eight. It did increase slightly because of number of events, but I didn't decrease it, because people, I don't think are going to save once they get in the building, they're going to be willing to buy a hot dog and a beer and that sort of thing. So three hundred and ninety thousand dollars with novelty income of twenty-nine thousand dollars, gets us to four hundred and nineteen thousand dollars, and our event operating income of eight hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars. Moving down to advertising and sponsorship, right now we're showing three hundred and five thousand dollars. Advertising and sponsorship was something that was, our, our approach over pandemic was pretty fluid, it was almost like pandemic. And the reason is, when pandemic first started, and I remember having a silly thought, we'll be out of this in three to four months, we'll be fine. This is going to, this is a blurb, it's not going to be a year and a half later, and we'll still be in pandemic. So the initial conversation with the sponsors was, look, as soon as the building went dark, we were in breach of contract, we owed you time lost on our contracts. So we're going to, in theory, keep track of how much time we are dark, and on each individual contract, we will make you whole on the backend. So if I owe Jim Galey three months, then I'm going to make him whole on the backend for three months, knowing on the financials that we would have a gap in where we were showing revenue. Well, that approach for three months is great, for a year and a half, that's not great. And so, while the conversation with the sponsors stayed the same, our approach was a little bit different on the books, and so we started to include time lost on the amortization schedule. So the example that I gave the board was of this, if the venue entered into a contract with Sam Surprise Hair Care Products, and it was a one-year contract for twelve thousand dollars, that means the monthly payments would have been a thousand dollars. Right now, let's say for ease of numbers, I owe Sam Surprise another year, so I'm going to spread that twelve thousand dollars over two years, and the monthly payments become five hundred dollars. So we're not showing a gap on the books as far as time lost, the sponsors still get made whole, but it keeps our financials intact. And so that's why you're seeing three hundred and five thousand dollars, and that is being applied almost in every other line that you go down. Naming rights partnership, we're going to show less, we're showing a hundred and fifty thousand dollars instead of a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. Right now, we are in year eight of a ten-year contract with those guys, and I say those guys as if they're family now, because we just had our first call with them to start, to start talking about renewal of their naming rights partnership, and they are exactly, Royce is exactly how you would envision him, a businessman, and he just instantly makes you feel like he's part of, you're part of the family, he'll tell you funny stories about his wife. But in that process, it was a really great conversation, they have every intent of coming back, and for the most part, it's really just tweaking the contract, it's been a ten-year contract, so Portland Pirates names are still in there, so it's really more housekeeping items that need to take place in the contract. But overall, it was a great conversation. Moving down to luxury suites, as we mentioned earlier, we have three of six that are sold, which is going to render forty-seven thousand dollars. And then club seats, right now, we're projecting to be around fifty-four hundred dollars. We have roughly around three hundred of those to sell, most of those are wrapped up in sponsorship agreements, which is why you're going to see a lower amount right here. And then other rentals miscellaneous income is sixty-five thousand dollars. That number is a culmination of high school hockey rentals for ICE in the winter, when high schools practice in the building, for about thirty-five thousand dollars, twenty thousand dollars' worth of ATM fees that we get to collect off the ATMs in the buildings, and then ten thousand dollars from Ticketmaster for mail, for mail-in orders, and that gets us to total other income of five hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. Indirect expenses for us is obviously going to be all of the expenses it takes to run the building. Right now, we're looking at a cost of living increase of two percent. There were some savings in some of the departments, finance was an example of twenty-four thousand dollars. F and B was showing around forty thousand dollars' worth of savings, because we work with nonprofits as part of our labor for the concession stands, but with less events, we were going to have less labor. And that gets us to our indirects of two-point-four million, and then that gets us down to our net operating income of nine hundred and eighty, or nine, net operating loss, I wished, net operating loss of nine hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And that was a lot, so do you have any questions? I don't think I came up for error but once, so I can certainly tell you, by all means, hit me with any questions that you might have.
So this means I'm not going to be able to name that place after myself two years from now?
Well, I don't know, how much, how much money you got? What are we talking about?
No, no, we'll talk, yeah.
They get first right of refusal, so that is in their contract.
And second, and secondly, it's not a question, it's a comment, this is a lot better than I thought it was going to be, so.
Okay, well, that makes me feel a lot better, because there have been some sleepless nights over the summer.
Yeah, no, no, I'm looking at this, and it, it makes sense, and I think we've managed to keep the ship afloat anyway, and took on some water, and it looks like next year we'll probably be bailing it out.
I really hope that is our problem, is that we don't have enough hands to bail quick enough.
Okay, yeah, thank you, thank you very much, a very good presentation.
Anybody else? No? Thank you. We have a motion on the floor, can I have, unless there is further questions, I'll call for the vote to approve the Cross Insurance Arena Budget. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Item twenty-one oh four-one, approval of the FY two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two jail budget. Mr. Manager?
Yes, I'm going to ask Alex to present this budget to the commissioners.
Howdy all. So this is a budget that we went through in the past, worked a lot with the sheriff and the major on this, and I'll try to keep this budget, since we've chatted about it before, down sort of the big, the big topics on it. I think the first thing I'd say about this budget is, a lot of the line items you'll see stay the same as the prior year, and a big part of that simply was, last year was not a good indicator for future year budgets on many of these line items. You know, it should shock no one that cleaning and sanitary went over last year, probably would also shock nobody that travel and transportation and lodging went way under, but again, we're not going to use those as benchmarks. The biggest thing that I think has occurred here, and this is occurring fairly recently, we did receive extra funding from the state of Maine towards the jails coming up in the present year, taking it up to three-point-seven million dollars, that's the good news. The bad news is, we needed every penny of that to get through this particular budget. The biggest, well, there are sort of three big issues that drove this budget. The first is something that we've already, you've heard us talk about before, which is we had to reduce the boarding revenues from other counties, due to the fact that we've sent back a number of them, given that we don't have the staffing available to keep going with that. So that causes a reduction in revenue to the tune of roughly two hundred and fifty thousand dollars right there. So that's driver number one. The next big driver is actually also going to be our next topic tonight, which is the renewal of the health services contract for inmate medical with Horizon. Two things occurred during the past year with regard to inmate medical. One, and again, it would be no surprise here as well, the value and the cost to employ nursing- the value and the cost to employ nursing staff went absolutely through the roof. And so in order to remain competitive and to keep staff, we have to give them a pretty significant jump just to keep being able to hire staff. That's hit number one. Hit number two came in the form of sort of a surprise, but probably shouldn't have been a surprise, which took the form of pharmacy costs. And this was basically the medications given to the inmates. What we saw last year was a significant increase in the number of inmates receiving very expensive medications, namely hepatitis C and HIV medication. These are medications that are diseases that often occur due to people sharing needles. Sharing needles is an issue that we've got in this county right now. So we're not looking at that particular pharmacy cost going down until we fix other crises. So those two factors have caused a pretty significant increase in the medical contract, which is going to go up quite a bit as well. After that, there is, as much as we could possibly manage on wages, and that really gets us to where we are on the budget in a nutshell, if I boil a very large budget down to a very short conversation. Obviously, we've gone through this line by line by line with the major. And certainly if the sheriff or major have any major points that I'd like, that I may have missed here. It's always a funny budget in that at the end, we can usually boil this down to pretty short conversation topics because so much of it just is what it is. Major's done a great job at saving wherever possible, but some of these, such as the medication, there's just not a lot we can do there. And we certainly have to be able to pay for the medical staff. So Jim, if I've missed anything, or if anyone has any questions?
The budget is a very large budget, but it's two, three, four line items and really sway it the way it does. And you know, if it wasn't for the ability to take the maximum 4% through state statute of new taxes on top of the additional funds that are heading through the appropriation committee and the legislature currently, that's really what packaged this budget up. And it's as easy as that. So Alex did a fantastic job working with the sheriff and the major on the budget in fine tuning to what you see today. And this is a budget that we feel good about. We had created a budget before that we felt it was a house of cards and wouldn't last all that long if things went sideways. But this budget here is the second version of that, and we feel very good bringing this forward this evening. Thank you.
Jim?
I don't need it tonight, but I'd appreciate a note or when you have the information isolated, I'd be interested in knowing the order magnitude of those prescription cost changes.
Yeah, absolutely.
You took it out of my mouth. I was going to ask him for a couple of the comparative figures.
Oh, I've got them.
Well.
Yeah, I'll pull them out.
I would like you to repeat them just for the public's edification. When I first heard them, and by the way, to the public, one of the reasons I think that the commissioners are a little bit quiet on this is that we did cover this in a workshop quite extensively. So a lot of the questions got answered at that time. But if you do have some of those figures, if you just indicate what they are on a monthly or annual basis or something so that we're...
Yeah, I can definitely pull them right out for you folks and provide them.
Well, to give you an indication, I think it's a hep C medication, it's a Humira. I think that can cost $30,000 a month. And it's usually a three-month treatment plan.
For one?
For one person.
Let's put it this way, when they transfer from another jail, they are counting the individual pills very carefully for these. It's really...
They're driving them up one pill on the top.
If it's a couple of pills short, boy, major's on the phone. So yeah, it's, they make a big difference. But I think the key there is it's unlikely that's entirely going to go away. It is an indicator of a larger and different problem, which is why we're seeing it. They're not, those diseases aren't on the upswing in a vacuum. They're occurring because of needle usage, so.
Could I have a motion to approve the jail budget?
So moved.
I'll second.
And a discussion, is there any further discussion on this? Anybody want to make any further comments? Hearing none. Could I have a vote, please? Those in favor of passing the jail budget?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you. Then to the second one, we might as well take the motion right now, is a Second Amendment to the jail health service contract. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second. Discussion.
I might look to the sheriff to talk a little bit about what Armour has been up to the past year. They've had quite a year.
Yes, they have. They and the correctional staff have had their hands full. But Armour's been a great partner through COVID. By virtue of, every arrest that comes into the jail, before the arrest is taken out of the cruiser, everyone is tested and we get a reply back within 10 or 15 minutes. That's when the decision is made how to handle an inmate coming in. Assuming that they pass, they're still given, they're taken down to a quarantine unit for 14 days and then monitored on a daily basis to make sure. Because really, that test at the cruiser basically says at that moment in time, the person was not COVID positive. So they, they're very, they're important in the chain of custody, if you will. They've also had some staffing issues. You know, everybody jumped on because of COVID. Some of the things we were talking about medically kind of took a backseat, other than maintaining people's health. MAT, you know, right out of the gate, we were talking about medication-assisted treatment. Then COVID came and it was kind of like, that's right, we have that program. Because everyone was focusing on COVID, et cetera. Similarly, there were jobs being offered at higher rates of pay, so we saw nurses coming and going. And lost a lot to the COVID vaccination program that was out there. So in order to remain somewhat competitive, Armour's been after us to increase it so that we can somewhat be competitive in the medical market, understanding that nursing is down on people anyway nationally. So they've done a phenomenal job. As I stand here today, since April 28th, we've been COVID-free in the jail with nobody, whether it's inmates or employees, et cetera, having issues with COVID. But we are still on high alert for anyone coming in and dealing with it as necessary. So any questions on the Armour? I'll tell you, they've done a phenomenal job. I'm not sure a couple of years ago I'd have felt that way. But they've really turned things around and they're a great partner.
Any further questions with the sheriff? Thank you, Kevin. Any further discussion? I'll call for the motion. Those in favor?
Aye.
I don't believe we have any further new business. Is that right, Mr. Manager?
That is correct.
Comments from the county manager?
Thank you. I got to find the sheet here. First, I want to talk a little bit about the American Rescue Plan and some upcoming dates that we have for getting out into the public, into the towns, and hearing what their ideas are. On June 23rd at 7:00 PM over Zoom video, we will be conducting a public hearing for anyone who wants to participate. There is a sign-up form to register for that Zoom so we know who's going to be participating and where they're coming from, whether they're general public or whether they're coming from an organization. That is on our website, www.kumlincounty.org. And there's a link right on the front page to get you to where to register. After the June 23rd public hearing, we then have three meetings. And those three meetings are designed, they're all Zoom meetings, and they're all going to be designed to talk to the elected officials and appointed officials of the county. And when I say that, I mean, we're hoping to have town managers, city managers on that call. And we have also invited the delegations from each region that serve up in Augusta, whether you're a legislator or a senator up in Augusta. That's an opportunity for them to participate. As you know, they've been in the middle of it on how the governor is proposing to spend their stimulus funds. We want to hear from them as well as the local officials. So those three dates are the 25th, 29th, and 1st. They're broken out into, not commissioner districts, but we call them regions. We have the northern region going on the 25th. We have the lakes region going on the 29th. And then we get the city or greater Portland, I would say, on July 1st. All those video calls will be at 3:00 PM in the afternoon. The other item, I talked, that we do have a link on our front page of the website. The other item that is under that link is a public comments page. So if you don't have the ability to join us on one of our video calls, there is a ability for someone to get on there and tell us what they think. Learn, one, a little bit about what the eligible uses are for the stimulus funds. And then, two, share your opinion. How should the county spend the $58 million that we're supposed to be getting over the next two years? The more comments, the better, I believe. And everything's going to be taken into account. As there are, the meetings that we've had thus far, we have learned a tremendous amount. And we are starting to put common themes together from what we've heard. And so I'm looking forward to even more meetings before we really dive into how we're going to focus our attentions in terms of any type of application that we float out there for funding. So those are just the meetings and public input up to July 1st. It's our hopes that once we get back from the July 4th holiday, we'll be scheduling more time on the later July, early August to seek further public input on the subject item. So just wanted to share those. And again, all these dates are on the county's website and even more information's there. Travis Kennedy, Director of Public Affairs, has done a nice job establishing that page on the county's website. So it's pretty comprehensive, as comprehensive as it can be on June 14th.
Is the website how somebody puts a comment in?
Yes, it will allow for public comment. Yep. There's some forms in there, who you are, what you, who you representing. And then you can type it in, in the document. I wanted to share a video call I had this afternoon with members of the City of Portland staff. As the commissioners heard me the last couple of weeks talking about potential uses of the county stimulus funds, one item I threw out to the Portland staff is whether they had any interest in partnering around childcare. We've heard a lot around childcare and how it's impacting employees getting back to work. The capacity level of daycares and preschools today versus what it was pre-pandemic is a fraction. And so we're seeing our employees impacted. And when I was talking to the city manager in Portland a few weeks ago, he sees the same. So today, we had an early discussion on what a collaboration would look like. And there's still much to talk about, but today was just a kind of a meet and greet and worked through some conversation around that. I think it is a beneficial area to look at because I do know, I have staff just in my office that have had a hard time juggling the daycare, after-school care issue. And so if that's just in my small little office, what's it look like across the board? And I've even touched base with the greater employee base here at the courthouse and down at Deeds. And there is some interest. And I think everyone sees the value of that. And it's a heck of a recruiting tool for us to bring young family members, whether it's male or female household, to the county. That is a heck of an incentive to come to work for us if there's some childcare as a benefit, whether it's a reduced rate or fully funded. That's to be seen and down the road. But that would make us in Portland stand out from the rest as a quality employer for their employees. Lastly, courthouse is slowly opening up. I think many of us were surprised with the amount of foot traffic in the courthouse today. It seems as though a number of courtrooms were going. And so I think from here on in, we're going to see more and more people in the courthouse. If you're general public and you're looking to get into the Registry of Deeds or the Register of Probate, they are still taking appointments, but I know the Registry of Deeds is looking to open up sooner than later. And I was unable to touch base this afternoon with the Register of Probate to talk about her scheduling. But I do know for the foreseeable future, they're still going to be scheduling and they haven't really missed a beat. They are, there's no real impact with them scheduling and restricting the walk-in traffic at this time. But ultimately, as things open up, we should too. And we're getting there. But I just wanted to give the word of caution that someone may want to call Deeds and Probate before you come because they may still be on a scheduling, appointment scheduling process. So other than that, that concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Comments from the executive staff? Alex?
I'll keep it brief. I just wanted to add on to what Jim was saying. The really very high-level conversations we've had thus far on the ARPA funding, it's been really amazing to hear so many different people from so many disparate areas all focused on doing the most good for the most people with that as what they have in mind, period, end of story. And it's been pretty cool to see that. And that's really all I have to add. You've heard plenty from me otherwise.
Sheriff, do you have anything you'd like to?
Thank you. Staffing at the jail, we're still about 58 positions vacant. We've hired two since the last meeting. They both were seasoned, certified corrections officers, so they were quick on hitting the floor. So a little progress, but not much. We've given all of our recruiting that we've done, we have zero candidates or zero applications. In fact, we just eliminated three that have been kind of a challenge for HR since February, you know, needing certain things and not making contact, et cetera. So we removed those folks from the list. We recently closed a general revenue, I mean, a general population, POD. And so that eliminated five positions that we have to fill on a daily basis. And we moved those individuals to York and we took on some females because we had capacity to take the females and protective custody inmates. So we took protective custody in females, gave general pop to York County, and we were able to close down a POD. Give a little bit of relief. For law enforcement, we currently have three openings. Two actually great candidates from other police departments that are in the process. And we have a potential two more retirements or retirements coming up for law enforcement. To speak to the corrections, we, the major, myself, the chief deputy, Don Bruin, his staff, met with the main apprenticeship program. Actually, I had made a connection. Former mayor Colleen Hilton, who's on our jail board of visitors, had kind of put a plug in for us with this group. And we looked at their program. Their program... Their program is an excellent program. The unfortunate thing is it requires an apprenticeship over two years, which means that you basically have an individual working with an FTO over two years. And that's not going to help us out. We need to be able to train the person through the academy, get them field trained, and then have them work by themselves. So, you know, we've put that on the back burner. I think it's a great feeder program when we get our staffing up to the point where we can do that and have people working in conjunction with each other for two years, but that didn't, that didn't meet our needs. Legislation, this has been a challenging and different year. You know, I'm glad, I guess, that I didn't have to drive to Augusta, but it's been pretty time consuming as well. You know, one of the big legislation, pieces of legislation we've put in and it's going to the Senate is the increase in civil fees. You know, we've been challenged with trying to figure out how we can make civil pay for itself. And the fees have not gone up since 1984. And when you look at the, the cost of putting these folks out to serve civil paperwork, that's gone up considerably. So that looks like it might pass. It's on the, it's, it's due to go in front of the Senate. Jail funding, all indications that's been postponed until next session or the, you know, the second half of the session. And to a certain extent, I guess, I'm glad about that because the way things are coming through or going through the legislature, my concern is something's going to get through and there's going to be a price to pay just by virtue of trying to, try to clear the docket. So with a little bit of time and a little bit of effort, maybe we can get that right the first time and not have to deal with this year after year after year. Qualified immunity, I mentioned that the last meeting, that died thankfully. And I think, you know, you should be happy. Town should be happy and I can tell you law enforcement officers and corrections officer are happy because although qualified immunity is not given to everybody all the time, that is a doctrine that is very helpful and gives us a little bit of ability to sleep at night. There were a lot of social justice issues that were brought forward. You know, some, some that were actually good and some that were a little far reaching and had some dire consequences. And we'll see how those go through. Law enforcement contracts, summer contracts are starting. So we've got Long Island, Chabig Island, Fry Island starting up in the next couple of weeks. Some have already started, actually. Opening the jail, we are walking very slowly, much like Jim mentioned with probate and deeds. There, there's a, there's a thought that after May 24th, when the masks were off, that we just have a flood of people. And the, the bottom line is that we got to be careful. Because we don't want it back in the jail, in a congregate facility. So I've asked the staff to stop putting together a plan. You know, some of the issues that we've got is court's going to be open up. So how do we handle those folks? You know, and do we quarantine them if they leave the jail and they come back, even if they've been gone for an hour? And what's the cost of that going to be if we test them every time? Professional visits, you know, some of the attorneys want to get in, visit their, their clients and stuff. What's that going to look like with COVID and because of staffing? Because it does take some, some personnel to, to make sure those happen. And then inmate visits, the inmates have not had a visit since March of 2020. You know, by standard, we'd allow them two visits a week. I've asked the staff to look at one visit a month, you know, and let's try to get gradually into that. Because again, we have staffing concerns and COVID concerns and we have about 300 inmates that are going to want visits and they should get their visits. But we're going to try to meld that with the visits that they can get with the tablets. So that's more, more to come. And then, as Alex mentioned, medication costs, unbelievable. You know, I get a monthly, weekly, actually, report from medical on what those are. And there's a lot of expensive medications out there. When we're talking expensive, we're talking like, you know, $6,000 for 16 pills. And you can, you can spend a lot of money there. So there's not much we can do there. We have to maintain the medications if they're on it when they come in. We do have some flexibility if they're, have to be on it and we discover that. But most of these are coming in on a medication that we have to continue. I will tell you, the medical staff does a good job of, if the individual's been arrested and they have medications at home, we try to get that medication and we will either send somebody out to get it or have our loved one bring it in so that we can use their medications first before we, you know, start spending money out of the property taxpayers. So that's basically it. I'll answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you, Sheriff. Just no one else from staff? We have a new staff person, but? Oh, sorry. That's right, you've got, you, you happen to have a little piece of information for us.
I'll be, I'll be brief as well. I just want to say that the pandemic and COVID-19 precautions and, and trying to maintain safe protocols with our employees is kind of thankfully wrapping up. It has been a long, arduous year, year and a half. But I really feel that we came through it very well, all working together as a team. It wasn't easy, but I think we did a good job getting through that. We've heard recruitment, hiring and recruitment and retention. We've heard, we've heard it a couple of times tonight. That continues to be a main focus for us here at the county as well. What we're finding is that a lot of our positions, we're just not remaining competitive with some of our regional market. And we are working, doing, we're doing a little study right now with some positions that we've targeted that are difficult for us to hire and retain, to see how we compare in the market. Not only municipal or local government positions, county, municipal, but also taking a look at the regional market, private business, retail, hospitality industry, auto dealerships, so everybody out there in the greater Portland area to see how we compete and compare so that we can be competitive as we try to attract quality employees to work here. Some of those positions that we're having trouble besides corrections officers in law enforcement, those continue to be difficult for us. And we continue to have proactive strategy sessions on how we can recruit, what we can do to be proactive and strategic and creative to bring those people on board and keep them. But also, you know, trades positions, electricians, facilities maintenance, technicians. Even our fleet, if we were to lose some of our, you know, fleet positions, mechanics are extremely difficult to hire for right now and retain. Assessing positions, administrative support, just general administrative support positions for us are difficult. Just an example, we had an employee resign last Friday. Very good employee. We're very sad to see her go. But she was offered a position with a local attorney firm. And she was making, to start, more money than we could offer her at the end of the pay scale. So we have to really take a look at some of that to, to keep these people. You know, IT positions. So the list goes on and on, just some select positions we're looking at to make sure we know where we stand so that we can make our adjustments. And continuing on with our labor negotiations with the unions, labor management, and also direct negotiation. So pandemic and recruitment and retention really are the two top priorities, I feel, in HR last year and continuing forward. Thank you.
Any questions of Don? Comments from the county commissioners? James?
I don't have too much. I want to be one of the people to welcome Catherine, who comes here out of my district. She was with the central fire station in Portland, I'll be, until today. She's been here one full day, hasn't quit yet, so we, we've got good hope. So we're welcome. And I, I too want to compliment the, both the sheriff's office and the civic center on their presentations tonight and done a good job. It's been more than challenging here for the last year and a half. But it seems like we're coming out on the other end here, so I'm glad for that.
Thank you, Jim. Neil?
Thank you, Steve. I want to applaud all the members of the executive staff and staff members who have done a great job echoing Jim's comments of keeping, keeping our county government running in, under the most arduous circumstances over the last 15, 16 months. So whether it's at the civic center or in HR, executive, or the sheriff's department, thank you very much for your efforts in, in keeping Cumberland County, Cumberland County government and governmental services at the top of municipal services in the state. We really, we really do appreciate your efforts. Also want to congratulate all you Cumberland County residents out there who have gotten vaccinated. If you count the eligible vaccinated crowd in, in our county, I think we're at 73%, which is outstanding, something like that. And so it's among the best numbers in the state. And to all those residents out there who haven't been vaccinated, please consider it. There's all kinds of incentives out there, whether you go to Rising Tide and, and get vaccinated there or, or at your local pharmacy. It's really for your own health and your family's health. This pandemic and COVID-19 will go into recession, but it's not going to go away. And we'll be fighting this battle for a while. So take heed about that and protect your neighbors, protect yourselves. Want to congratulate all the high school seniors who are, who are graduating or have just graduated and launching their new life after a, a year and a half of confusion and, and, and some type of difficult efforts, whether it's be hybrid learning, remote learning. You and your families have, have suffered through it and, and done a great job. We wish you well, seniors, as you go out into the world for college and beyond. And with the end of the school year, caution all the people out there, there'll be a lot of kids out on the streets, a lot of kids antsy, yelp, out and about. Let's just be mindful of the safety, both on the roads and bikes, et cetera. And I want to wish all the fathers out there, Happy Father's Day to come, this coming week. Thank you.
You take out, you take out all the information.
Oh, thank you, Steve. Yes, this is the first actual live, almost the first actual live meeting we've had for a year and a bit. I think we tried one and decided that it wasn't worth, you know, we couldn't get enough people in the room to make it, make it functioning. So we have not done it for a while. My, looking back on this year, a bunch of things that maybe we should be carrying on with. One is thinking about, thinking about health issues more, more often and more consistently. Commissioner Jamison mentioned the high vaccination rate in, in Cumberland County. But one of the things that we missed entirely this last year, directly due to our COVID precautions, is we didn't have a flu season. It's essentially zero. And that's because we've been doing the things we should have been doing all along for flu season. Wash your hands, wearing a mask was a, was a radical thing. A lot of, a lot of places in the world do that in flu season. And what we learned from this is, I mean, regardless of your feelings about COVID, flu is, everybody recognizes that the flu is out there and the things we've been doing for COVID just killed that, killed that completely, completely dead. It was effectively zero. So maybe we need to continue, continue these precautions to some extent on, on end of the future. Another thing from my experience is I'm, I'm actually become a semi-fan of, of teleconference meetings, especially if it involves driving a long way to get to, to get to the meeting. And I'm, I'm beginning to think that we'll probably be doing a lot more, a lot more stuff on Zoom than we ever did before just because of the, just because of the convenience factor. I have to say, I have missed in-person meetings, but I also, I also enjoyed, you know, not, you have to drive an hour or two to a meeting. It's, it's much, much more productive time if you can do it from home or from, from someplace nearby. So things, I, I don't think things will go back to normal. I don't think they should go back to normal once the, you know, once the severe restrictions of this pandemic are over. I think you just need to keep that, you need to keep that in mind. Again, congratulations, I've, I've already said how much I appreciated the presentation from the Across the Sheriffs Arena. And I think the sheriff, the sheriff's budget is also an example of not as bad as I thought it was going to be, which is pretty good given our, given our circumstances. So, so thank you very much. I'm personally looking forward to summer. I'm looking forward to getting out and maybe taking a little bit of vacation that doesn't involve, that involves going a little bit further than my deck. And, and we'll, we'll, we'll see how that goes. Anyway, I'm encouraged by the, I'm encouraged by the change in the weather and the, and the easing of the restrictions we've been under. So I'm feeling very optimistic about the future right now. Thank you, thank you very much.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Watanas?
Well, I don't have anything to say because you, my other three here have done such an excellent job. You took the words right out of my mouth, Jim. This is the second time I've had to agree with you again, so, you know.
How many, is that 15 years?
Yeah, 13 years I've agreed with him twice. That's been in the last month.
Well, I might bring up Costco days here pretty quick, so then you'll have three times.
I'd like to say, you know, how it to Catherine, it's a pleasure, you know, I would have you on board. And we're not a bad, a bunch. I don't know what you've heard about us, but we're pretty self-sufficient. And I would just like to thank the sheriff, you know, for, for the budget, with presentation. I'd like to thank the major, you know, for all the hard work he's done at the jail. I haven't been there in the last 15 months, but that's okay. Melanie, my heart goes out to you. You've been in the dark now for 15 months and you're finally going to come out. So I look forward to the hockey season that was starting in October. I look forward to, with the in-person meetings, you know, again, except for the hour in and the hour out, but that's okay. I will never complain about a Zoom again. So I just want to thank the executive staff for the last 15 months. I know it hasn't been, was easy, but you've kept the doors open and everybody's safe. And that, to me, that's an accomplishment. And with Don, your office has done a fantastic job. You know, with day one, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, you know, thank you. And I think everybody here has done a good job and I'd like to thank you, Jim. You know, for your expertise and we're keeping, with the doors open. I look forward to the email I get, always every Wednesday, okay? The county, you know, is still in business, so, you know, we'll just keep up, up with the good work. That's it.
Thank you, Sue. Well, I'll finish up here and I'll try to take a different tack a little bit. The legislature's winding down and one of the things, Tom, that they are beginning to iron out are the rules to create, being created to be able to meet off campus or electronically. The legis, the judiciary committee has, and judiciary has created two drafts so far of things that they think that they would accept. So it's, it's, it looks like that will come together. There's still a number of county bills that are in play in the legislature, even though it's winding down. And we're going to try to get a list of those that are going to be carried over and those that, well, those that are dead really. And then the ones that are carried over and the ones that we think we can get by. As far as saying thank you, broaden it out here, I have to thank the staff and the, and sheriff. I still put, put you in that area too, from departments. Thank you also, but because the work you did during this pandemic has just been yeoman's service. The other thing, and I don't think people know this enough, this year I've been fortunate to be chair of this group, but the other commissioners have performed wonderfully. They've been supportive, they've looked forward, they've spoken to the public. they've tried to help when necessary. And it was never a question of, I can't, or I'll make it happen. So for them, I thank you also. Really, it's, it's a pleasure working with a group like this. And with that, I'll end this. Now, I have a question before we move on, we, because we are going to go into an executive session. Do we envision, and I can't remember making any motions after the executive session. I don't think so.
No, but we do have to make it. We just do have to make a motion.
Well, I know, but that, I'm talking about. So I would say this to the, to the public, you're certainly welcome to stay on board, but I don't think that, that we will have, we won't be having any formal motions to be made because we'll probably have, we'll have a further discussion and then with information coming to us. And as a result, I don't know if you want, we will be turning the camera off, and if the public wants to wait till they come back, that's, that's certainly a prerogative. But there won't be any further business.
Because they're on tape delay, so it's like time travel.
It's not live.
So I would entertain a motion for, to go into an executive, executive session. Oh, that'd be just a note to myself. Executive session pursuant to one MRSA subsection 4056A to discuss the county manager's annual performance evaluation.
So move.
Those in favor? I declare we're in a executive session. And ask that all those that are not part of the meeting to please leave and thank you for coming.